And and called the order, the Wednesday November sixth, twenty twenty four, city Solon regular city council meeting. We'll start.
Pledge of the fifth to the five United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this one for liberty and justice.
Uh, roll call Duncan, it's Arlene here, Gabriel Kramer.
Yeah.
And Lauren will be calling in shortly. I don't think I see her on there yet. Her civility pledge, we pledge most civility by listening, being respectful of others and acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community. Looking to perfection, approve the agenda. Can we any changes to?
I'll move to perfect and approve the agenda.
Outside of the. Duncan.
Yes.
Arlene.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Kramer.
Yes.
Next is citizen speak. We have a full house tonight. Uh, this is if anybody would like to speak on any non agenda item tonight. I'll move on to consent agenda. So this would be approval of the minutes from the October twenty sixth regular meeting. Approval of the list of bills, treasures, reports, transferability permits. We have quite a few this evening with that. Uh, and then beer and liquor license approval uh for Eastwoods.
Any issue regarding that?
No, no.
They will move to approve the consent.
Duncan.
Yes.
Arlene.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Next, we have the fire department report. So we do have our next A D C meeting uh next week, it's Wednesday night with that. We'll have an update on calls and everything like that. I believe there's still a couple openings on the department. But they are looking for them. They're sitting low thirties within a little of thirty five on there. So if you know of anybody interested in joining, they would gladly take some applications. Uh, Sheriff's. Uh, next.
Reminder that uh hybrid flushing started Monday. Um. This hasn't been done in in several years. So it's a good thing we're getting out there and and uh flushing these hydrants. Um. Of course, we use still ongoing with lead collection on Mondays and that's going well. Uh, and then uh been busy winterizing equipment. About it.
All right.
Excellent.
Next, please with library.
Yes, we submitted our annual survey that's due every year in October and thanks to Travis for helping with the financial side of that. It's a great partnership and then the staff helps me gather all the information. In the packet I included um just some screenshots within the body of the survey. You can look now and get a history, a five year history. And it's sort of interesting to see over the course of time. The biggest thing to note is the incredible increase in the number of electronic resources that are now being used and so and our number of website visits. So even though our circulation of physical material continues to maintain, you also see them increase in the electronic materials. Um, fun for all night will be Saturday, six o'clock games at the community center and then seven o'clock will be the movie with popcorn. It is Troll Dance Together, all ages welcome. Uh, we will be closed on Monday for Veterans Day and then also the Thanksgiving week, we will be open on Wednesday, the twenty seventh from nine AM to five AM. And then Thursday, the twenty eighth through Saturday, the thirtieth, we will be closed for that Thanksgiving break. We have two fun teen programs coming up that sixth grade through twelfth grade, trading card games tomorrow. So Magic the Gathering and Pokemon and another one that I don't know how to play, but they do. Um, that will be tomorrow at four and then in two weeks, uh teen super Smash Brothers turn um also at four. Going on.
Excellent. Uh, next Dave, uh city engineer.
Yeah, just a few things. Uh, received a preliminary plat for Trail Ridge part three. So Scott and Kami and I will be looking over that, getting comments back. That should come before planning, building and council before too long. Looking over some site plans, some of which are on the agenda tonight and then uh we're also working out on the wastewater layout. We'll have our second round of meetings on that on the fourteenth to look over some additional layouts and then talk about how how that will shape up. So that's all after tonight. I'll deal with the rest of those items as we get them on the agenda.
Takes us to the public hearing. We have uh motions to go in the public hearing.
I'm gonna be doing public hearing.
Second. Duncan.
Yes.
Arlene.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yeah.
Kramer.
Yes.
Yes, I was muted, sorry.
Right. Uh, we have a rezoning application for Fox Ridge part one, A lot four and five. Uh, these are the lots that have been before the council with multiple proposals the last um year or two. Um, the council uh in July looked at a a concept presented by the uh senior housing. Senior Community Housing Corporation, you getting that right, folks? And uh um. For some uh senior uh senior housing development on those lots. Um, and so that they've moved forward with the rezoning application. Planning and zoning did review that application on their October first meeting. They have recommended approval. As you'll recall, um, the plan is to do the development in phases. There will be uh on the corner lot would be the first phase and then uh later with the second phase. One of the concerns that council had during this discussion as well as planning and zoning is. These are commercial lots that are being rezoned from commercial general to R three residential, which is multifamily. With that concern was what if these are rezoned and the development doesn't move forward? Um, in response to that, uh, city attorney Calvin Olson has drafted a conditional zoning agreement that will also be on the agenda tonight. Um, do you want to give some highlights on that?
Basically, uh, what it's doing is it's uh. It makes it so that if if the council rezones it, the rezoning would only to uh R three would only be applicable to the senior housing project. If for some reason the senior housing project does not go forward, then the developer will have to rezone it back to uh CG or general commercial. So that way you're protected in case the project doesn't go through, but you're also given the project a chance to go forward with uh. With this rezoning with conditional zoning agreements.
So with that, does it, does it automatically, like if if they say we're not going to do this project, does it automatically go back to CG? Or does is it going to be like a developer's agreement where they have to?
They have.
They're going to go back and do it themselves and then it also says in there that the council won't even look at a site plan or anything that doesn't. In the R three that wouldn't the senior housing project.
And I believe the deadline in there is June of twenty twenty five to present a site plan. Um, currently the the lots are are owned by Soul and State Bank. So in anticipation that those then get transferred to the um housing group. The agreement is written that this agreement runs with the land so that whoever owns the land is required to rezone that back at their expense. If the project doesn't move forward, the safeguard in that is that um. The council has been pretty um vocal about, you know, adding high density in this area. And so it's a safeguard to ensure that just because it's zoned R three, another development can come in and put in uh high density residential there. Uh, the council's um reasoning for supporting this is because it meets that senior housing need in the community. It is being run by a nonprofit organization. So there's unique circumstances to this development that the council is supporting the rezoning. And so we tried to incorporate that in that conditional zoning agreement. So what you're going to see on the agenda later is you're going to see first the conditional zoning agreement. And then the first reading of the ordinance to rezone these two parcels, lot four and five. This will be the first of three readings. So there'll be two more readings and then I anticipate they'll come in um December first with their site plan. And then that will have to go through planning and zoning like other site plans. Thank, anybody have any questions on that?
Anything that you'd like to add to that?
I don't, I mean, we're excited about it being not for profits, off or more apartments to see a house. And obviously we're currently by the Catholic Church and this gives us opportunity for another product, even though it's our own. So very excited.
Want to be in the public hearing, any comments from the public?
I'll move to close public hearing.
Duncan.
Yes.
Arlene.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Kramer.
Yes.
Whitehead.
Yes.
We are now out of the public hearing. Oh, is the city zoning?
That's another public.
Okay. Uh, we have uh voting go into this public hearing for the cities on the map.
I will move to go into the public hearing.
All right, Duncan.
Yes.
Arlene.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Kramer.
Yes.
He said yes.
She said yes.
Yes.
Yes, uh, yes.
All right.
All right, so the city zoning map and um we have some larger copies that do that here. And um because the ones in your packet are pretty are pretty small and hard to read. So. As um the last time we have formally updated our zoning maps has been several years. Each time that we asked, it's time to update the zoning map, there's been an annexation or rezoning. We finally just had to draw a line in the sand and say we have got to get this updated. Um, and it's for one, we get a lot of calls from appraisers, realtors wanting to know. And it's, you know, if if we have an updated map available on our website, it's going to reduce a lot of the calls. It's going to make everybody's life easier. Plus, it's just time to update our zoning and city map. And so when you update a zoning map, that does have to be done by ordinance. And uh planning and zoning has to also review it, which they did at their October first meeting. We also have to give public notice, which is why this is a public hearing. Then later on the agenda, you'll see that there is going to be the first reading of three to update the zoning map. And then it will be shared with Johnson County. And so when you go to the beacon to look up a property, they'll have this overlay so people can see it. And then we also have the burden of making sure that as things get rezoned, because this latest rezoning is not incorporated in here. That we'll have to work closely with the county and make sure we're keeping the maps updated. Um, so the zoning map before you uh was prepared by um Dave uh at the strength cam with this staff. We've worked on it for several months. We feel like it's uh brings us current um as far as a official zoning map.
Any questions? Any questions or comments from the public on that?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
All right, Duncan.
Yes.
Arlene.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Whitehead.
Yes.
Takes us down to new business, the animal order here.
Yes, um, we are here on the matter of the animal owned by Ms. Sarah Town. Uh, on October fourteenth, twenty twenty four, Mayor O'Neal issued a notice of violation and an order to remove. Uh, the animal owned by Ms. Town uh from the city limits pursuant to section pursuant to sections fifty six point oh four of the code of ordinances of the city of Corville. Our state of Coral, so I got a number, I see uh the uh just read the section here so everybody has this in front of them. Upon a complaint of an individual that a person is keeping sheltering or harboring a dangerous animal or vicious animal. On the premises, the mayor or peace officer should cause the matter to be investigated. And if after investigation, facts indicate that the person named in the complaint is keeping sheltering or harboring a dangerous or vicious animal in the city. The mayor or peace officer shells order the person named in the complaint to safely remove the animal from the city. Permanently place the animal with the organization or group allowed to possess dangerous or vicious animals or destroy the animal within three days of receipt of such order. Um. There, a vicious animal means any animal that. That uh attacked, bitten, swatted a person while running at large and the attack is unprovoked or any animal has exhibited vicious tendencies in the present or in past con- past conduct. So uh on on uh, there are two complaints, which this is based off. On May thirtieth, there was a complaint. Uh, and on July eighth, there was a complaint about this uh dog, uh, this black dog owned by Ms. Town. Uh, both complaints on May thirtieth and July eighth were uh investigated by the sheriff as required by the uh ordinance and both were found to be founded. Uh, city administrator uh Kami Rasmussen did issue a, uh, after the first violation, did issuing a warning letter to Ms. Town on June sixth. Uh, warning her that the uh dog was at large and that it was a vicious animal within the city. And then the uh second uh, the second uh incident occurred about a month later. So we are here in to determine uh. Uh, once uh Mayor O'Neal issued the order on October fourteenth, October seventeenth, we received a request and appeal from Ms. Town. Uh. That and the reason was she had put into action several methods of containing the dogs on the property and would like to discuss this with the mayor. So this is the time and place for an appeal pursuant to fifty six point oh four of the code of ordinances of Ms. Town. If you'd like to speak, would you like to go to the podium so we make sure we get it uh, get it a uh, make sure we get everything recorded there? Thank you.
Um, I'm Sarah Town. Um, my dog raised and she's she's a girl, but um I had the in-ground fence put in for her. Um, that was a trial and error thing. Um, she, we finally got it under control with um one of their older collars that has battery life of six months. And they gave me two extras because the other one was um their newer models, which needed charged all the time and like. I'd have to charge it all time and run it room charge one time when she got out. Um. I also, she's also my emotional support pet. Um, I'm training her to be a service animal right now. Um, but she hasn't gotten out since that July. Um, occurrence and she's never bitten or really attacked anybody. Um, she, I thought it was a game every time she would get out. The way I would try and get her back. I, it's my fault. I made it like a game for her, like with treats or whatever. So she would get out and think it was fun. Um, but she has not gotten out since. She doesn't go attack my car in the driveway. She only goes to the door thinking she's going to go bye-bye. Um. I don't know what else. I think I've tried, I've done everything. Um.
Okay. Um, anybody have any questions for Ms. Town? Uh, do you have any other, uh, anybody else who want, you want to speak, Ms. Town? Okay.
I mean, the fence was quite expensive and she's went to a lot of expense and trouble and a lot of emotion trying to make sure she contained her. So then she couldn't get out.
Okay. So, um. Uh Lieutenant Wiseman, uh, do you want to, if you have, if you have a. Your deputies both uh uh investigated these events and both concluded the May, I gotta make sure the right dates that that the uh.
May, just May and July.
May and July uh incidents were both founded, correct? And there are, there are other incidents that the sheriff's office uh investigated that they could not uh could not conclusively say were founded. Am I correct in saying that? Okay. So I think uh at the, I think what the city is thinking at this point is this dog has been out a lot. There's been lots of complaints over the years that uh city administrator Rasmus, they could certainly uh uh talk about. But so the council's duty at the, at this time would be to determine, you have the right to either affirm the mayor's. A decision to make sure that the animal is removed from the city limits or you can reverse it. And by reversing it, you would just say that uh she had, she has been issued citations and for these uh events. If you reverse it, then the animal will stay in the uh city limits of the city. You don't have the right to, under the ordinance, is either affirm or reverse. You don't have the right to, I'm gonna let her keep it and though we're gonna have conditions on the uh. So so uh if you uh, if you allow the animal to stay, which is certainly right. Uh, if the animal escaped again, we would probably back here with the same, same thing going on in future. So I guess that at this point I have discussion, if you have any questions for me, how this works. Uh, when you guys are ready to make a decision, one way or the other, I'd ask you to have a motion a second and then take a roll call vote. So we had it, had it on the record. So if if we have a motion, a motion, a motion will be to affirm the decision and a yes would be to affirm it, a no would be to reverse it.
Need comments, questions, thoughts? On it that we have. I'd say when when issuing it, it definitely was not an easy. Uh, decision to do with that. The concern was that there had been two founded vicious attacks on that. And let's not to say there wouldn't be a third when there were, there have been numerous complaints we've seen on the loose. If it were a child out walking, like that's. I I would feel awful if there was a third incident and we we didn't do anything. So that was the reasoning behind. Um, the issue was of it. So that's just. Some reasoning behind why.
But this time I'd ask if there was a motion to affirm, if there's not a motion to affirm, then it will die as we will. The animal will get to stay in the city limits. I will move to affirm the mayor's uh declaration and vote.
I'll second. Duncan.
Yes.
Arlene.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yeah.
Kramer.
Yes.
Whitehead.
Yes.
Okay, so what'll happen is I'll issue a ruling showing the council's affirmation of the uh order and will get served uh. Uh, upon the uh Ms. Town. Okay. But I think that uh ends the uh item that we were discussing right now.
Right. That takes us to the item number seventeen, the Alliance Energy Updates. Uh, we have Peter Griffin here. He's our key account manager.
Um, thank you all for having me. Uh, my name is Peter Griffin. I'm a key account manager with Alliance Energy. I serve um at the point of contact for the city of Solon as well as um mostly large businesses, school districts and towns in the area. Um. About a month ago, month or two ago, we had an executive round table. Um, Kami attended and uh asked that I come and share some of the information that we had there between um. City representatives and alliance executives. Um. So with Alliance Energy, everything we do is driven by our purpose, which is to serve customers and build stronger communities. Uh, because obviously we don't just serve the communities, we live within them and we all want to see them grow and prosper. Uh, to that end, we work to. You know, work. Excuse me. Uh, we work to improve our system and keep costs competitive. Um, we also work with towns to provide incentives for energy efficiency projects, two examples of which are. Uh, the new fire station over here, we provide about seventeen thousand dollars in new construction incentives. And uh, I'm working with Scott and our energy efficiency team right now to provide an incentive for about fourteen thousand dollars to upgrade the water pumps at the water treatment facility. Or the motors, pardon me. Um, as you may be aware, in the last year, Alliance filed with the IO Utilities Commission for a rate increase. Um, as of September this year, we reached a settlement with the I U C and intervening parties to um raise our rates. The headlines is. Uh. Overall impact on bills will vary depending on the customer class and the usage. But the average residential bill, we should probably see about an eight dollar or six percent increase on the electric. And a two dollar increase on a typical gas bill. Um, and then our industrial customers and larger users may see up to a fifteen percent increase in rates. Uh, like every business, we face challenges over the last couple of years, drought, extreme weather, fuel costs, inflation, supply chain issues. I'm sure everybody's heard that over and over. Um, but. We are working to build a more sustainable, diverse and resilient energy future. Uh, we continue to strengthen and modernize our grid and upgrade the infrastructure to make sure that there are fewer outages. Uh, that we can get back from those outages quicker. And um, we also need to share that as part of the settlement in this electric case, that we don't expect base rates to increase for at least another five years. So part of the settlement was to, you know, they granted us an increase less than what we asked, but uh been negotiated that we would stay out of a rate pace until at least twenty twenty nine. And on that. Tag, uh, one of the pillars of growth and affordability is economic development. Uh, my team, key account managers work across the states. Uh, we work with local, regional and state development groups, um constantly seek to grow and attract businesses, the areas in which we serve. On the, in twenty twenty three, we worked with thirty three companies on expansion projects that resulted in announced uh two point seven billion dollars in capital investment. Within the footprint of Alliance Energy and created almost twenty three hundred new jobs. Um, that's kind of my prepared remarks, but if you guys have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer if you think of anything else. Um, I didn't bring business cards, but uh Kami can provide my contact information and John, I'm sure you can uh.
Is it something with the wastewater treatment plant uh planning? That that's something that we could look to see if there's other incentives.
Oh, absolutely.
So uh, this was for the existing plan and then um we've gotten out of talks, you know, once we get to the planning stage of the new plans. Uh, we've got a commercial new construction program where you can submit preliminary designs to our engineers and they can take a look at it and suggest. If there are ways to make it, to build it more efficiently, uh, we can suggest those and then provide some incentives to make those upgrades.
Fairly similar to what we did with the fire.
Exactly, yeah.
Uh, the base rate increase in fees, is there any? I understand that will be increasing for five years, but does that leave room for increases for specialty charges or select fees to be integrated at some point during that timeframe?
I, I mean, there may be riders that are added. Um, but yes, the base rates will stay the same. Um, for that period due according to this settlement. Um, you know, bills can vary. Uh, I think one of the, one of the main costs, one of the main drivers is just fuel costs, which we pass through. Uh, we don't mark up, you know, the natural gas or coal that we burn. And part of the reason we're trying to expand and diversify our resources, solar and wind in particular, is that there is no fuel cost to those.
That the the rate increases over, over the five-year period. Is that right?
Uh, these increases were effective end of October first of this year.
All right. Uh, any other questions? All right, Peter.
Thanks for having us. Yeah, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Next, we have the conditional zoning agreement uh that we discussed during the uh public hearing on that. Kimmy or Kevin, anything else to add?
I think we discussed it. Um, I don't think I have anything to add from what we talked about earlier. I'll move to prove the conditional zoning agreement.
I'll say. Duncan.
Yes.
Arlene.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Kramer.
Yes.
Whitehead.
Yes.
Takes us down to item nineteen, ordinance number four eighty-eight, the rezoning application for Fox Ridge part one, one A lot four and five. Any additional discussion here? You have a motion to?
I'll move to group ordinance forty-eight.
Duncan.
Yes.
Arlene.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Kramer.
Yes.
Whitehead.
Yes.
Takes us to item twenty, uh, North Market Square, phase two, cycle.
So this is um a fairly new item that has come up in recent weeks. Um, North Market Square, phase two was approved in two thousand twenty-two. As you know, that was a development by Neil Ruscha. Um, the first phase of the two multi um used buildings are completed. And then the phase two was the um, the rehab of that existing garage building into some kind of a restaurant. So that uh site plan amendment was in two thousand twenty-two approved. Um, and. Neil's at the point now that he's ready to move forward. So the site plan's been approved. It was just a matter of um, getting the um, developer's agreement signed. There was some carbon gutter money that needed to be uh, accompanied that agreement and there was a few other access and easement conditions. Um, through that conversation, Jerry Waddell, who is um, um, Neil's contractor on the project, reached out and with some questions and some inquiries that had to do with the stormwater, water management on the site. The question was, would the underground system that was proposed, could council consider another option? And so um, our first conversation that we had amongst staff was, well, we don't know what council, but first we need to make sure that what you're proposing is feasible. So Dave took a look at some preliminary concepts and offered some feedback and they then submitted a formal site plan amendment based on their stormwater calculations. And so we're here tonight um, because they are requesting from the council to amend the original site plan that was approved for phase two specifically uh, specific to the stormwater management plan, which then also impacts the number of parking spaces. So the two are tied together because the plan originally was underneath the parking, the new dry basin they're supposing would take up some of the space that was initially approved as parking in the original approval. Um, that said, um, I have some um, I have some calculations that they have um, provided. Uh, but first I would um, ask Dave to um, share his thoughts about the change from the underground um, and stormwater plan to the above-ground dry basin. Um, just, just the, just the understanding of the difference of the two. And then of course, um, Jerry and Neil are here as well to add any, any uh, other comments and insight.
The system they had originally designed with a chamber system that would be under the parking lot and there are domes that hold space and there's rock that's in underneath the dome. So between the space that's under the dome and the space that is the void space of the rock, they meet their stormwater detention requirements. Uh, in lieu of doing that, they've looked at putting in a pond that has uh, the ability to infiltrate some water on the lower part of this and then the rest of it would be detention space. Uh, they meet their water quality volumes with this, just as they would with the chamber system, they also need release rates and uh, it, either one of these only has a certain amount of volume. So regardless, if we exceed the capacity, then there has to be an emergency overflow route. And that's the same for both systems. So this is just a different way to handle the stormwater. Uh, as Kami mentioned, what it does though is it takes away the ability to put parking over top of it because now it's an open basin. So we lose seven spaces in doing that, but from a stormwater quality and stormwater quantity requirement, they need, what would be their option?
Thank you.
So if I'm reading this right, we're, we're basically short sixteen spots. Is that, is it, is that what uh, is that the new number or is that the old number?
That's a great question. The
I mean, I guess, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so when I took a look at the um, this, the store, the developer's agreement shows that thirty-six spaces are required um, for phase two. Now, if you'll remember, back when phase one was approved, they were also short spaces and the council allowed the um, the parking lot at, at Sol State Bank be some overflow. Um, so what they've done here, and I'll let them kind of walk through, uh, having that chance to, to review this completely before the meeting. Phase two requires thirty-six spaces. Um, they've taken some time and, and I was, I've been pretty forthright with um, with Jerry and our conversations that uh, parking has been um, an important topic for council and that they would need to do their homework and come with um, a great um, uh, give you a great reason why, why you should approve this. And I think they've listened. So this is their attempt and I'll let them kind of talk through what this is. Thirty-six spaces um, are required. They have um, this is their, I'll, I haven't, I can't explain this, but I'll let them do that. What, what we need to remember though is that we already have some off-site spaces designated at Sol State Bank. So for phase one, and there was also some language in the phase two agreement that there needs to be an agreement to that um, the parking in, in phase one parking is also, also supposed to help with the phase two parking. So it makes sense to kind of look at it as a whole, which is what they've attempted to do.
Neil, you want to walk through that or Jerry?
I think Jerry will.
Uh, good evening, uh, staff of the council. Uh, Jared Waddell of Monody Development and Construction. Uh, been working with Neil for the last few months on this project. Uh, so appreciate the opportunity to talk with you this evening. Um, I think Kami spoke well to really the most significant changes that we're proposing uh, with uh, this new site plan. Uh, and really um, as developments go, um, and as time goes, material, the costs go up and then you identify costs. Uh, and so this really is the um, the underground system with the approved site plan was really cost prohibitive. Um, the ADS system, uh, just the materials was about a hundred fifty thousand dollars, over twenty-five percent of the project cost initially. So uh, that's why we sort of went back to the drawing board to try to find solutions uh, that could maybe work well. Um, and so uh, tried to look at uh, dry bottom basin and then consider the uh, shared parking uses. So I'll kind of go over that uh, here in a second, but um, just for reference, um, the primary change would be the basin, uh, but then also as was stated, the parking spaces. So uh, what was approved uh, was thirty-eight spaces with that phase two uh, and what this new plan shows is twenty-nine spaces. Uh, and that's before we start talking about uh, complementary uses. Um, you know, what hours are most people there and active um, and using the other commercial spaces? Uh, and what would be used for the proposed restaurant space? So uh, the other uh, thing that we kind of looked at was when the phase one was approved, um, there was a, I guess, an agreement at that time by the council that um, the balance um, was served within five hundred feet with public spaces. And so that was something like forty-some odd spaces that was proposed to be short the, my understanding was the intended uses of phase one are actually uh, more intense than what ended up playing out. So I think the flexibility was the desire to have restaurant uses or other types of more intense uses on those phase one. What are tenants now with a salon and furniture store and a small vacant space and those, you know, have a lot less use of, of parking spaces. So um, I'll kind of go over, I think um, I imagine Kami gave the updated version.
Of the site plan?
Oh, sorry, of the parking calculations. I can walk through that.
Yes, that's, yeah.
Quickly.
Yes.
Um, so the, the first page shows uh, the current uses uh, for North Market Square. And so giving you that context, but then also sort of kind of um, erasing the board, if you will, and say, okay, where are we at today? Uh, what are we proposing? What are the current uses? Um, you know, what are, what spaces uh, are we planning to share essentially? Uh, and so multifamily spaces, there's six apartments between the two buildings and three spaces apart per unit. So get to eighteen required. The retail businesses, uh, one space per two hundred gross square feet. There's fifty-six hundred square feet between the two buildings. That's twenty-eight and then um, as Kami mentioned, thirty-six hundred square feet for the restaurant would be thirty-six for essentially phase two. So get to a total required parking spaces of eighty-two. Uh, what's provided in phase one is twenty-six. What's proposed in phase two is twenty-nine. Uh, off-site, off-site, we could, you know, do some wave finding, uh, say, you know, parking four hundred something feet down the street. Um, walk along the uh, the sidewalk on the same side of the highway uh, to get you there. That gets to provided of seventy-two, uh, essentially a shared uses reduction of twelve percent or ten stalls. Uh, and there are, again, using that similar number of seventy-four public spaces within, within five hundred feet. Um, and just, I guess, for, for context, you know, certainly uh, each municipality has their own requirements and codes, but in, in some neighboring cities, uh, they'll allow up to a fifty percent reduction if a shared use is not only open, essentially using the parking spaces at the same time. So that's what I put to the, the second uh, page is a projection uh, based on peak usage. The first part being evenings and, evenings and weekends. The multifamily being a uh, one space per bedroom. That's kind of a good rule of thumb. And then there's ten bedrooms between those six units to get to ten. Uh, the salon, um, uh, a little bit of uh, research found that uh, you know, one space per chair um, is, is a, a good uh, reference for that. During the evenings and weekends, they are currently open uh, by appointment with freestylers and an esthetician. Uh, so figure that's sixty percent usage, so that's three. Uh, and then um, I won't go over all these, but first store, the vacant space of the restaurant and then with the provided, uh, that's actually sixteen excess. So would be, if you agree to a shared uses arrangement, uh, essentially we would have sixteen spaces excess, not sixteen spaces short. Um, and that's during the max of weekends. Uh, during the day, very similar, uh, something in that fifteen plus or minus uh, range. So um, in that case, and we're saying, you know, no usage of the bank because it has clients and uses there. Uh, but then uh, using parking generation for the restaurant uh, from a international um, transportation engineer at ten spaces per thousand gross square feet. Uh, but add a forty percent gain usage uh, with this the, the foot traffic there. So again, I think what we're saying is from a shared uses standpoint, uh, we would propose that it's a a reduction of required parking of about twelve percent. Um, and then if you look at it with a projection, uh, it looks like we would have excess parking. I did drive by real quick on the way over, just as an anecdote, five twenty, eight spaces used of the twenty-six spaces that are there.
Have we used uh, kind of the shared space uh, theory in, in the past, or is there any precedent that we have like that, that you're aware of, Cam?
Or Dave?
Or Dave?
I think we considered it based off the time of use when we expected it to be busy and deploying the business that's in there is going to have the most amount, particularly with restaurants. I know we look at that with, with uh, across the street here, what does that look like and when is it going to be busy? And is Main Street also busy at that same time? So as we get more restaurants, obviously everybody's competing for the same stall, same time. But uh, you know, i- if that's something that's available on Main Street and some of those other areas within five hundred feet, I think that's probably the need to look at. Then also consider that onsite there's some kind of use, shared space available as well.
Uh, do you, do you have a sheet too?
I do.
Okay. Um, and from what, from what you're seeing here, is this pretty much, is it pretty close to what our code is saying or have, you probably haven't had a chance to review it with?
Yeah, the, the first on the table there is, is what our code is saying.
Okay. That one's our, okay.
That, that assumes that there is a restaurant going in there. I don't have anybody looking at it. I do have a, another retail uh, person that's looking at it, but uh, I just wanted it just in case there's a restaurant going in there. Think it'd be a good location for one. Jerry hasn't found one yet.
So if we're, we're currently at um, on that first page, then we're with your proposal, you're still ten, is that still ten less than what's required? That was, is that what, is that I'm reading it? So our requirement, you're, you're ten under the requirement or you're ten short of the requirement?
Correct.
Which one?
Uh, you're short.
Ten short.
Ten short?
Yeah.
And that's with removing seven more spaces? That's, that gets us to the ten, so we were three short before. I just think we need to be cautious about um, being short in spaces. I know we've had other uh, developers that have wanted to do stuff and we've been in fact, I could be wrong here, but the way I remember it is we've had uh, some other developers um, short on spaces and we just want to make sure that we're not getting into um, a situation where uh, we're ending up way short on space because it, you know, it's what we hear concerned for a lot of people around town is, is parking. So um, going from three short to ten short, um, is, is a, is a little, seems like a, a little bit more than what I'd be comfortable with. Um, I hadn't said that, you know, we, we are, you, you have came up with uh, seventeen spots on, on Sol State Bank too, so that's.
I just feel like in some ways Solon has big city issues because we have this bound Main Street downtown area. We don't have a lot of horizontal space to expand. So I think we're going to grapple with parking pretty much no matter what we build or what businesses are there. Um, because of that issue, I'm, I'm comfortable with this. I'm not crazy about it, but I think this is a, the kind of thing we're going to be facing again and again. And I think that, and to a certain degree, we may have to accept some things we don't really like in order to sustain our growth and development. So I'm okay with this. Not crazy about it, but I'm okay with it.
I'm personally hesitant. I mean, three spots, I would probably shrug off, but if we're short ten, what are we gonna, for consistency sake, what are we gonna tell every other business that comes in? If they're short by ten, fifteen spaces? That's my initial thought.
My, my guy just kind of tells me the current tenants that are there probably are even, it, it makes sense, especially with the shared usage on that, but it's, will always be a salon, will always be a furniture uh, store. I think it's something where we don't want to handcuff ourselves something there. I don't know.
I have done other agreements like this with strip model type developments where there are multi tenants that restrict the number of, you know, restrict tenants when tenants move out. So, you know, you can't, I mean, obviously you had two restaurants in here, you know, the zoning would allow it, but you don't want to have that. So I think that's something you could do by agreement if typically council is so, so willing to accept a, a site plan. And so, but that was just thought I had from a, just from an agreement to address your concern.
Do you have any comments?
You know, the, the, obviously parking is, since I've been on the council for several years, it's been a big issue with developers and uh, yeah, ten over seems high. Um, I agree with Corey, three we could all live with and I'm not sure I can live with ten either. I, I just, you have to be attentive to additional parking spots.
One of the other things is this is not taking in account any street parking.
Right.
Because currently the, the roadway on Cedar and North Street are, is very narrow seal coat. You know, Cedar Street is, is been on our radar to improve. Um, you know, that could in the future provide uh, some long street parking in that location and, and North Street might be able to too. And that was one of the comments I had during our meeting. Was just to be cognizant of, of that roadway and especially with placement of the carbon gutter in the heights to hopefully allow us some, some opportunity to improve everything.
Andrew, any?
Are there guaranteed spots for residents that live above?
I have some signs along the, the north end that, that say resident parking only.
Okay.
So.
So tho- those are guaranteed for the residents that live there?
They're supposed to be, but you know, the
Yeah.
I talked to the guy at the furniture store yesterday and he says, there's plenty of parking out there. You know, people were going to El Sol. You know, people were going to El Sol with the Legion or Bobs don't park there. And you'll see all kinds of people parking there, heading across the street, so.
And if I may, I have one, one thing just that I kind of point out, follow up on. So the, the multifamily spaces code required is eighteen. There are only ten bedrooms there, so I think as a practical matter, um, you know, one space, uh, per bedroom is like, how much you're gonna get as a, as a maximum? Uh, so that's, that's a difference of eight spaces right there in and of itself, so.
So with that assumption, would it be that they never have guests?
Well, but in terms of peak usage, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, you know, if you have a couple in one bedroom and, and maybe they have one car between, uh, two bedrooms, you know? And so that's, yes, there's certainly some guest parking that would be part of it. But, uh, uh, you know, as you balance out peak usage, certainly, the restaurant isn't always have thirty-six spaces we also, uh, so.
The twenty-seven spaces on the phase two, if you look at the two buildings to the west over here, Mark Patterson Building across the street, Big Grove, Ed Lindeman's over here. That's twenty-seven spaces more than those buildings have combined for off-street commercial parking.
I think that's why we want to be very diligent about making sure that we get our parking right. You know, like, we don't, we, we want to make sure that, I, I, I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't on council when those, when those, uh, uh, buildings were built. But, um, I, I, I'm, I'm sure it was, I'm sure there was discussion about it, but I just want to make sure that, um, our decisions that we're making, that we don't, we don't let a problem begin. You know what I mean? As far as parking goes, uh, if we can start to, um, make sure that we're very cognitive of, of, of what we're, what we're proving and changes.
Can I, you mind if I add that a little bit? I s- I shared this with Jerry, that the evolution of our Main Street has happened over time. And two thousand thirteen, when Big Grove came, it was a whole different climate dynamic on our Main Street. And so the decisions that were made by that council then are gonna be different from the decisions made by the council of today. And as our Main Street has grown and evolved and become more vibrant and active, each, each decision kind of layers on top of it. And I kind of explained that when we talked about kind of the history of, um, you know, over time, you know, this council has been very focused on parking because of decisions made by previous councils. And they're trying to ensure that they're not creating a future issue for future councils, is that fair?
That's, okay.
Hundred percent, yeah.
How, uh, Scott, how, we mentioned Cedar Street and possible on-street parking. How far out would you forecast so that kind of work could be done that would increase parking that it is?
I, I mean, that's, that's up to your guys, right? I mean, ambitions and priorities, so.
And I think that's something for council to, to keep in mind with these kind of requests. Uh, that's got to move on our radar a little bit more than what we've had, but also. Because that does give us some relief, uh, with, I mean, this is a huge shortage, but it's a shortage that we all are concerned. I think what Cammy says, uh, the way it has to be, a bit more cognizant of, of parking as, as this goes along. But that gives us an option. I guess as a council member, I, if, if I knew that we were gonna have more access to on-street parking, then I'd feel more comfortable with this in that area. We have to feel more comfortable if we can move things forward, uh, just as we're gonna have hindrance here as this grows out. Uh, hindrance is gonna have some, like, parking issues depending on what it's used for, uh, so. I, again, I'm, I'm, I'm fence writer on this. Again, to me, as I said or thought about it, if we, if we knew that in near future we're gonna develop that streetwise and as a park, I would feel more comfortable with this.
You know, having this, this area developed is probably gonna move it up just on its own.
That's what I figured.
E and J uses that for their deliveries and, you know, they've, uh, they've had issues at times, especially during the winter time because of the, the narrowness of the road. At that time, it was a residential area or across the streets residential, and they would have vehicles parked on both sides. So, um, you know, we actually go in there and, delineate a, an actual roadway with some curb and gutter, it's gonna help quite a bit.
And we would likely probably do one-site parking on that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there any thoughts for action on this? So with the action, we would look to either approve a site plan amendment or no action, correct, or not approved?
Yeah, if you don't have a motion, something that probably means that.
We would also need to amend the site plan or the developer's agreement, so.
Which we could if you, which will.
Yeah.
That'd be part that we'd amend that, that to, to show the new, uh, new amend, or new amended site plan with the parking variants that we've discussed.
Yeah, and that's where we could have the, would there be another conditional?
I can put language in there about not having two restaurants. I don't know any restaurants, no, if somebody put two restaurants in there, yeah, problem, so.
And you're talking to restaurants and the com- combination?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, because, because if you added a restaurant, I mean, what they're, we're basing the shared use on is retail and a one restaurant. You know, you can't have two, two restaurants, you, over, that wouldn't be. But I think that's a protection we could put in there, and I, I'm sure they wouldn't mind. That wouldn't be a problem because I don't think two restaurants would ever fit, yeah.
I was just gonna say that, that they originally, I don't think they're plumbed correctly for, um, a restaurant either, you know? Seaweed's too small, there's not a.
In the phase one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's no grease.
Is there anything in the developer's agreement about that, uh, that talk, that talks about the bank parking at all? In off-hours or anything like that?
Actually, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Uh, I checked both the, the part, phase one and the phase two. It just talked about the off-site parking, um, within five hundred feet. But I recall from the meeting that, you know, it offered up the bank lot, um, because anticipation that a restaurant's gonna have a lot of weekends and, um, uh, nighttime activity in council. And that was kind of part of that agreement to consider off-site parking. But it's not specifically stated in the site plan, so it's something.
We could add that if, if they are, I, I think they've already said that that was available, so I could add that too.
One of the things Jerry and I talked about is, you know, they would need to make sure there was signage onsite, advise, and notifying people that there was parking, you know, at the bank. So that would be their obligation to ensure that they're letting people know.
And when it's available, right. When, uh, when are you guys wanting to get moving on this, on this phase? Is it ASAP or is it six months, twelve months? But it seems like if, once that road's done, you know, what if we re, if we decide that we're gonna redo that, those roads next year, that gave them five or six more spaces, on-street parking. That would get it down closer to the variance, that, that get, that get closer where, that get closer where we need, need to be.
Is that five or six more on Cedar or North Street?
I think between both of them, probably, right?
I think it'd be more than that.
I, I agree with you, but I would, you know, it seems favorable with, with that five and, and that's fine.
How many, how many spaces do you?
I, we have a bit.
Parallel, you know, in a block, roughly.
Well, you've got E and J's opening there too, right? That's on the north and Cedar Street.
The parking could be on the opposite side, the opposite side of the street.
Yeah, we did some, we, we've done these sketches back when we did this, so we can revisit those.
About ten or twelve on one street line.
Yeah, I'm, I'll get some of this and I'll move to, uh, prove your parking square phase two site plan.
I'll second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Farley? Yes. Gabriel?
Well.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
That takes us down to ordinance number four eighty-nine, the city zoning map. Somebody just trained the public hearing, any further comment on this?
I'll move to approve, uh, ordinance four eighty-nine.
A second. Duncan? Yes. Farley? Yes. Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yeah.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item number two, resolution twenty-four thirty-three, city map update.
On this resolution, while we're going through all the work on the zoning map, it makes sense to also update the city map and the city streets map. Again, B and K has been, uh, working hard, um, to make sure that that happens. Um, again, this is just, this allows for residents to have access to the city map. We will file this as our official city map with our reporters, um, because we are required to do that. And we adopt an official city map along with the zoning map, so those will both get, um, updated, um, with the reporter's office. So these maps, while they look small, on the website, as you click them, they can blow up. So you can see them easily, you can read those street names. They're a lot, uh, they're intended to be computer-friendly. Um, so while they're hard to read there, and we do have people that just come in and want that. So, you know, this allows us to be able to provide an updated city map. Um, and ordinance is not required on a city map, so this is approval by resolution.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty-four thirty-three.
Duncan? Yes. Farley? Yes. Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item twenty-three, fiscal twenty-four year in financial update.
All right. Um, uh, in your packet, you'll see, uh, a copy of the financial review. I'm just gonna hit some highlights, um, and kind of go page by page, um, hopefully not take too much time. But I'm gonna start with the, on page three, on the fiscal twenty-twenty-four, uh, highlights. Basically, the city's major projects in the past fiscal year, again, that ended, um, uh, June thirtieth. Includes the completion of the chapel in Elm Street and East Fifth Street reconstruction projects. Uh, preliminary engineering, as we've discussed, with the new wastewater treatment plant and the property purchase for that. Uh, final property acquisitions of the North Street project. And, uh, our previous city hall building by the community center was remodeled to service the Johnson County Sheriff's substation. And, uh, we also completed some upgrades to the SRNA baseball diamonds, um, with new dugouts, sand and sod. Additionally, we moved a million dollars in local option sales tax revenue and invested it in some certificate, certificates of deposit to earn higher interest rates. Those are earmarked, uh, pretty much for the wastewater treatment plant's groundbreaking. Um, so we might as well, uh, get some extra interest while we wait. Um, the capital equipment replacement schedule continued as well, with, uh, with over a hundred thousand dollars set aside in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, which leaves us with over two hundred thousand dollars available for fiscal year twenty-five purchases, while also accommodating our public works team, uh, purchases in twenty-four, uh, the new leak vacuum, uh, super duty F, F five fifty and a cab lawn tractor and gator TV. Moving on to page four, it's just a report kind of overview. Um, this is how both the city of Solon and the state of Iowa track expenditures and revenues. Keeping us consistent with the state, uh, set of funds and accounts allows us to interact easily with the mandatory state reporting that's required of, of municipalities. On page five is the general fund, uh, balances. The general fund is where a majority of our revenues are collected and our expenses are paid out each year. Um, this page kind of shows the year and balances for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and the prior year. The largest change, um, is in the reserves within the general fund, which is where we move that local auction sales tax, um, into those CDs to accumulate. Uh, the next page is general, uh, funding expenditures. Again, the general fund's where we pay a majority of our expenses, uh, broken down by departments. The principal difference here, um, between the past two years' expenses are the property purchases, um, for the wastewater treatment plant and those North Street project properties. Um, and then the next page is basically just a chart, uh, it's the same information, just to note the changes at a glance. Um, Streets Department also covered some curb and gutter work this past year. And, uh, again, those previously mentioned vehicle purchases that have been made. In terms of general fund total revenues, uh, the primary source of revenue for the city is the property taxes that we've deployed. Uh, with the recent state fallback restrictions on property taxes, uh, that have been passed in the past few years, fiscal year twenty-four was the first year that we began seeing the impact on our, on our revenue from this legislation. So you'll see that, 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 uh, did have a bit of a decrease compared to twenty-three. Um, in terms of trust and agency funds on page nine, those are monies that the city receives via donations and are for uses specific to that department. We simply hold these funds in trust for those departments. Special account revenues, um, are those that are used for distinctive revenue sources. Uh, road use taxes continue to increase as our population grows. Um, our local option sales tax balance is lower, again, because of those CDs. Um, opening those CDs, using our, our lost tax account balance was actually recommended by our lawmakers. Um, capital improvement revenues are tied to our property valuation, and we receive around a hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, for, for that special, special revenue account. Um, we've been accumulating this capital improvement funds over the past few years, and that's in preparation for our water tower repairs and repainting. Um, the capital projects account was used for the chapel in Elm Street recon- reconstruction. We'll be transferring the funds currently in the ARPA account to cover most of those costs. Um, that will leave about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to be paid by either lost tax revenue or recruitment fees. And then finally, um, business enterprise funds, those are typically self-sustaining. Um, they're funded by our utility billing and fees collected for new housing development. Um, the water utilities balance was impacted by the well four breakdown repairs in twenty-twenty-four. Um, the wastewater treatment plant's negative balance has already been replaced by a state revolving fund revenue loan. Um, that has been covering all of B and K's, uh, preliminary engineering. Uh, and that loan will continue until the project is completed, and then it'll be converted into a bond. Um, recruitment fees were used to cover, uh, a hundred seventeen thousand dollars for the curb and gutter work and three hundred and ten thousand for those North Street project purchases. Both of those amounts will be replaced by tip revenues associated with those projects. It's just that they come, you know, a year or two later. So once they're distributed in the future, we'll refill those accounts.
Kim?
Yep, thank you, Travis. So the next page, on page twelve, this is a synopsis of the year. Council and staff spend a lot of their time working on projects, and it's sometimes really fun and interesting to see what a year looks like in a snapshot. So, um, we've put these together in categories of projects, development, site plan, property purchase, purchases, annual reports, policies and agreements, personnel, um, and building permits and grants and contributions. As you can see, it's been a very, it was a very busy FY twenty-four. Um, this, you know, this amount of work, um, means that we are doing really good work.
um, means that we are doing really good work here in the city of Solon. We're trying to do our best to operate as a well-oiled machine. Council working with staff, staff working with the developers that are coming in like we've seen tonight. Um, it takes a certain type of synergy to be successful as Solon is, and this is a good representation of why we're so successful. Um, I also wanted to give a shout out that we have processed, uh, that we processed ninety building permits last year. You know, that's some incredible work by city staff. Um, and our engineering firm and our building inspector, um, you know, just the valuation uh, of those of those is twenty million dollars. That's a lot of revenue coming eventually through property tax, coming to our community. I also want to um, give a shout out to the contributions that have come into the city from, um, that Scott has sought from at America and from Beef Days and the Area Community Foundation, as well as Brody. They're out there regularly, um, you know, trying to raise funds for the projects that they're hoping to, you know, bring to. So, you know, their time and their work that they're out there trying to find those, that, those additional funding resources. Um, and they've obviously brought quite a bit into the community this past year, so um, big shout out to them. And then, of course, I just also wanted to give a shout out to the um, Solon Beef Days, Solon Lions Club, Solon Optimus Club, and the Solon Area Community Foundation. And uh, Solon Economic Development Group, because without them, we wouldn't have had the Herkies. And the Herkies have, I think, been one of the uh, most rewarding projects that I've got to work on um, in my time with Solon. But just to see the folks that visit those Herkies has been, I think, a tremendous opportunity for Solon to be a part of. I wanted to just, if we jump to the next uh, few pages, these are highlights of the four major projects that we have uh, are closed out or been closing out. So there's a summary of where the, those projects are. We do have some additional work on our end to kind of determine, is there any surplus available in our general fund? We should have that by the time we get into budget in January. And also, there are some additional decisions to be made. And I'll, and we'll be working with the finance uh, committee to find out, what is our best option? Do, should we be using lost funds? Should we be using recruitment fees? Is there some surplus within the funds themselves? Those are conversations we're gonna be having here over the next few weeks as we kind of gear up for budget. And then um, I also wanna say that, you know, as I talk about, as I talk about the synergy. Um, I also wanna shout out to um, you know, just all the departments, because we've been really facing some real budget challenges, and each of the departments have brought their best to the table, their best ideas, their best energy, and their best attitude. And that's the reason that, you know, we've had a successful year amongst some very challenging budget situations. And we know those situations aren't going away, um, but we know we're ready to rise to the challenge, especially with this upcoming budget season.
One thing, just to pile on that, with just all the concrete work and behind the scenes work that all of you do. And this is year five, we budget number six coming up, uh, that I've been a part of. Just make it very easy on us. So thank you for all of the, the work that, that you do, uh, whereas you make a lot of difficult decisions. And that you ask for what you need versus everything, you have, you know, a wish list and everything like that, where then it comes back here, we have to make the decisions on that. So I feel like uh, all of you do a very good job, you know, limiting where it's, you're very realistic with the asks with that. And I know, I'm, I'm very grateful for that, and I'm sure I won't speak for everybody with that. So thank you for all the legwork and knowing that we're weeks away from the kickoff with, with all of us. I know your work has already begun, but thank you for all the diligence that you do.
Well, it's definitely a team effort every day.
I'm sorry, I gotta duck out, I gotta get a kid to softball practice.
Okay, we'll see you.
Thank you.
There's really no, um, there's really no formal approval needed. Thank you Travis, he obviously put a lot of work into the um, to the presentation, very well done, thank you Travis. Um, no formal, um, no formal motion needed, so we can just move on to the next agenda.
That'll take us to uh, resolution twenty-four thirty-four, the fiscal year twenty-four year end transfers.
And so several transfers are needed at the end of each fiscal year. Uh, these are reflected with a lot of the projects that money gets moved back and forth, curb and gutter. There's also reserves that are set aside, and we talk about those at council uh, during budget. We wanna set aside money for the siren, uh, so those are all reflected. And then we also have unexpected things like repairs. Typically, a repair gets made out of possibly sewer, but the insurance check comes in through general, and there has to be transfers. The, the transfers and this resolution encompass all of the transfers that we've identified that um, were required to close the end of the fiscal year, so it could be ready for audit. Audit is underway, it's actually close to being completed. And so this resolution reflects all of the needed transfers, and these transfers are, have, are reflected in the report that we have tonight.
We'll dip through resolution twenty-four thirty-four. Duncan?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to meeting, final item under new business, fiscal year twenty-five, first quarter financial review.
Yep, that counts. Yep, I'll uh, try to keep it short and sweet, I'm gonna be focusing on these two uh, reports. First one in red is expenditures. For fiscal year twenty-five, which is July through, uh, this past September, we're at uh, twenty-two point six-six percent of you, uh, budget usage. In fiscal year twenty-four, the same kind of year to, uh, year over year, we were, we were over thirty percent. So we are well within our budget for expenditures. Um, some of the notable uh, ones that you might see on here, um, roadway maintenance. Uh, under the general fund, we had the hoop building cover by the shop uh, kind of blew off. That was or just under twenty thousand dollars, but insurance is gonna be covering that. Um, we also, uh, the curb and gutter work that we've been, uh, been talking about uh, being completed on South Iowa and East Main Street, um, is actually over forty percent of that total expenditure, so. Um, under parks, we did have one final uh, ball field work uh, invoice paid in July for fifty-one thousand. And then uh, financial administration, which is the one that kind of pops out to most people. Um, we had an EMC insurance reimbursement, uh, we first had the expense of about sixty-eight thousand. That was actually, uh, we got repaid, um, and that was received back under non-departmental revenue. Uh, we had the one twenty-one North Dubuque Street house purchase of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And then we actually had the North Street property, or North Street project property taxes that had to be paid of about fifty-four hundred. Um, it does take, we need to pay one year of property tax before we can consider it tax exempt, being municipality owned. Um, under capital projects, basically just another final payment for the Chavel and Elm Street project of uh, twenty-nine thousand. And then the fire station project, which we didn't have a budget for, we had some phone and internet issues there. Uh, Scott and his team and, and the fire department worked on those, um, just kind of an unexpected one, those things come up. Um, moving on to the revenues compared to budget, uh, for fiscal year twenty-five through September, we're at just over twenty percent of the budget um, met. Um, fiscal year twenty-four was also just over twenty percent. Um, so it's very, very similar to fiscal year twenty-four, which we ended at a hundred and ten percent of, of that original budget. Um, I did look ahead, I pulled in October's um, revenues where we got our first of two big dumps of property taxes. And that pushes us to forty, over forty-three percent of the entire year's budget for, of revenues collected. Um, interest income remained strong across all the funds. Uh, the ball field usage fees have already exceeded the budgeted revenue. So Brody's been able to rent out all the fields for, and uh, thanks for that. Under trust and agency for playground, we have our Monster Mash uh, trunk and treat. We got donations, we put those into uh, that account. Uh, the wastewater treatment plant, we had that revenue loan that I discussed earlier for, for the uh, preliminary engineering, which again, we will continuously at certain points send, send the state revolving fund our invoices, and they will pay us back underneath that loan. And then finally, the uh, recruitment fees. Um, interest income on those recruitment fees is actually at two hundred and fifty percent of our original budget. Again, interest right now is incredibly strong. Um, we've also had the Trail Ridge and Saddleback Estates utility deposits and impact fees have reached seventy-seven percent of our budget already uh, in the first quarter. Um, after those two are, are some charts and graphs, along with the financial statement or clerk's report um, that year, you should be used to seeing quarterly reviews, so I won't go over those in detail. Um, I do wanna touch base on our three main revenue sources and how we're performing through Q one. Um, first one's property taxes. Uh, we are meeting our first quarter projections for property tax revenue. And again, we've received our first of two large uh, payments in October. And that pushes our property taxes to fifty percent, which is expected. Uh, and then on the other two uh, primary sources of revenue are utility payments. Um, we are meeting our first quarter projections for both metered water sales and sewer rental fees. And actually exceeding those predict, projections by about four thousand for water sales and eight thousand for sewer fees. So overall, um, I'm confident we're in a sound financial position for fiscal year twenty-five. And uh, I'm looking forward to having another successful budgeting um, over the course of the next couple of months for fiscal year twenty-six.
Thank you for all your work.
Thanks, thank you.
That takes us down to other business, uh, council committee. We have the reviewed sidewalk inspection program for the Streets Committee.
Uh, the Sidewalk Committee has reviewed the sidewalk inspection program. This has been a program that's been in place since two thousand and eight, twenty years, so it was part of the original um, team. Basically, this uh, since, since then, it's just been, uh, it's just been part of our city operations. It just happens each year, uh, thanks to Scott and um, city staff that, um, you know, coordinate together. So the city's divided in quadrants, it's inspected, it takes about a year to go through the cycle. While we've had this program in place for several years, we really didn't have a good written procedure. And we have several communities that have been asking us about it. So Scott took on the challenge to create an actual formalized uh, procedure and policy. Uh, John and Andrew in the Streets Committee have looked it over. They, they thought it looked good, and so we'll have it on the agenda for the next. So it's great to at least have that, we, what we're looking for is to have a written policy and have that continuity for going forward. Plus, the town has grown a lot since two thousand and eight, so we had to kind of reboot the map. Um, the, you know, redo the quadrants with Scott, Scott's put a lot of work into it, so thank you Scott for that.
Have no update on utilities, finance, personnel, the building needs and growth, uh, any updates on Jordan Creek?
I, I have a meeting with um, Bob Upmeyer on Tuesday and his engineer. Um, so really, what their, their focus is, is trying to get a parcel created for Jordan Creek to purchase. So this is just gonna be my first conversations with their engineering firm, probably the first of many. So again, things are gonna be, just um, keep it posted.
Uh, please come in, straight up procedures update.
So uh, Scott and I met with Lieutenant Westman, we had to kind of formalize that part, that our, our procedures for the stray animals that is discussed in the new sheriff's agreement. Um, what we did is we um, uh, created kind of a s- uh, stray animal procedure that's um, involves, um, you know, how the sheriff's office is gonna respond if the call comes in there, how are we gonna respond? What happens after hours? Where's the animal gonna be taken? Um, Scott's purchased some crates for the sheriff's office to use if they need them. They will be kept at the um, fire, old fire station. Then we also worked with Cedar Valley D-Maine Society, our contract covers pickup for stray animals. Um, so there's a lot of coordination from when the animal gets picked up, who's gonna report the animal? Who's going to, are they gonna report back to us when the animal's been picked up to ensure that it's not there, just um, you know, left overnight? All of those little pieces, we've worked through, we've written a plan. And uh, the sheriff's office has uh, reviewed it and approved it, and I'm waiting for feedback from Cedar Valley. And then, once we get that done, then we're gonna just implement it, because I think it's gonna just, you know, it's just gonna, it's just, it's just that piece of that agreement that we needed to get, you know, get the details done. So we're real close, I wanted to share that.
Uh, and then uh, there's a meeting this week, uh, or there was one earlier this week on the twenty-eighty agreement, correct?
Yep.
Progress is being made.
Lot of details, but I think we're, we're moving. Yeah.
Takes us to city clerk report, Susan. Candy, any comments?
Um, I wanted to remind everyone that this, uh, um, we are closed um, on uh, on Monday for Veterans Day. Board of Adjustment is meeting on the twelfth, that Tuesday, um, there's a request for a variance for a sh- storage shed um, that the board will consider. Planning and zoning will meet on the twenty-sixth of this month, and they are gonna look at both the rezoning for Trail Ridge and that part three. There was little zoning, little bit of zoning that needed to be tweaked, so they're gonna come to, to gather, even though they're separate items. So P and C will look at those on um, the twenty-sixth. However, with any rezoning, there's a public notice piece that has to happen, so it doesn't come right to council. Typically, it'll probably be the following month. Also, um, Dave mentioned that um, the um, our wastewater, our monthly wastewater treatment plant meeting got pushed back, it's gonna be on the fourteenth, so we'll have that report for council at the next council meeting. We usually try to do it the first council meeting of the month, but since we haven't been able to meet yet, we'll have that at the next meeting. That's all I have.
For me, can I ask for comments?
I just wanna thank the staff for all the amazing work they do, and how we, how much easier they make their jobs. So thank you for all the work, because paper evidence, and I appreciate it.
I would, I would echo that with the, then I have before, being a former accounting teacher. The, the progress that you guys have made in chart preparation and things that the layman can look at and read and understand is incredible. Cause school finance, city finance is not an easy thing uh, to track for, for most people, and myself included at times. But uh, uh, it's become so much more clearer for us, uh, as we look at it and uh, digest it. So thank you for, for that, that's just gotten better and better year in and year out.
Just to pile on that, not just the reading of it, but the presentation of it is extremely thorough. All right, next we have a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourners. All in favor, Sam?
Aye.
What question is concerning a lot of people regarding the sidewalk plan? It's not clear. Um, the old program, can you make remember, would resolve the issue by having a committee.